This meeting is obviously being video recorded. And we'll start with open session. Is anybody here for for open session?
I don't see anything in the chat and no hand raises as well.
Okay, so we'll move on. So we'll start off with announcements here. Why don't you take us through?
So first, we just want to announce the Country Hen Scholarship. We are going to go ahead with that. It's some good news in these not great times. So we'll be sending that out on all of our platforms. To we encourage as many people as possible to participate for for when school opens again, and we can help people with with their college costs. And then we have Katie. I'm going to bring Katie Young, our special events coordinator, to talk about frozen assets. Just give me one second. Okay, Katie, you're with us. You're on mute. And if you want to pop on your video and your sound, you can take us through.
All right, can you see me?
Good.
Yay, I made it. All right, so frozen assets officially signed on March 4 at 3:08 with 15 seconds in the morning. I'm pretty sure that huge windstorm that we had helped push the damn thing over. First place was Julie from the diner with her guests of March 4 at 8:15 and 35 seconds in the morning. And she won first place $300 gift card. Marie came in second with a March 3 guest of 4:10 and 15 seconds PM. And she wins the second place of 150. Addie, who is here, right? Hi, Addie. Congrats. You won third with your guest of March 3 at 3:33:33 PM. So she'll win a $75 gift card, which I will get to you at you guys' convenience. And Morgan Brinker, is she on here?
Yeah, Morgan, if you start your video and unmute, we can say hello.
Yep, there's Morgan. Hi, Morgan.
Hi, Morgan.
The fourth place, which was eight weeks of eggs courtesy of the Country Hen, with her guests of March 3 at 3:33:02 PM. So Addie, you beat her out by like, like 30 seconds. So but yeah, so congrats to all of you, and I thank you all for participating in this. We actually had quite the few guesses this year, a lot more than last year. So I'm hoping that we kind of keep it rolling and get some steam going, and it will take off and be a thing. So a lot more inquiries and a lot more people watching it this year, too. I got tons of texts as soon as it was over in the morning. I started getting them at about 6:00 in the morning, saying, it's over, go check it. Who won? I'm like, I'll find out as soon as I get the clock. But yeah, so that is the conclusion of frozen assets, and thank you very much for participating.
All right, so Addie's rubbed it into her sister every day since. That's going to continue for a while, I think. And and, you know, I think, you know, I wasn't sure whether or not we were going to get frozen ice for a while. I'm sure you were thinking the same thing. And then we got that nice cold stretch there. So appreciate you doing this again.
Yeah, yeah. And I thank the Country Hen for actually, they're the ones that put it out there and housed it and everything else. So without them, I couldn't do any of this, along with all of our sponsors who actually pay for the gift cards. So without any of that, none of this stuff would actually work. So thanks to everyone that participated and everybody that guessed and played along. So.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Morgan, for being our first special guest.
You're welcome. Thanks. Stay safe.
Oh, bye.
Bye. See you, Ed.
All right, Katie, I'm going to pop your one-day pour onto the screen.
Thank you.
You can handle that right now. Do you want to take us through this?
Sure. So we're going to have the Hubbardston Fair because everything will hopefully be back to normal by then. On June 27, from 10:00 to 3:00. And we're having, the Gardner Ale House is willing to do the one-day pour license again and set up their beer tent. Pretty sure this year, he's going to also be bringing some wine to go along with the beer. Chiefy is allowing it to be not fenced in this year. So it will be open, and you'll be able to walk around within reason. There'll still be police there, and we're still going to encourage people to sit at a fence, not a fenced-in area, but like a tented area. You know, so you get your food and you get your beer or your wine and go sit down at the area near the beer area. But the vendors at booths can go over this year. Chiefy's allowing it. So we're hoping, fingers crossed, everything's going to be okay. But I need, obviously, a one-day pour permitted for this.
Mr. Chairman, the packet, the one-day pour packet license is fully complete in your packets.
Okay, well, it sounds good. Anyone have any, sounds good. Anyone have any questions on any details? Looks like we've been through this before. I think some of the questions we might have had last year were answered and addressed, and then some. So, you know, I don't have any questions.
So I'll make the motion then to sign the one-day pour permit for the Hubbardston Fair.
I can the motion.
Okay, any discussion? On favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, it's unanimous.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate it.
All right, Katie, thanks.
All right, I'm booting you, Katie. Goodbye.
Bye.
Mr. Chairman, if you'll allow me one more out of order, we have Officer Jeff White. He's here as well, so we can pop him on the screen.
Sounds good.
Jeff, if you're there, pop your video on and unmute. All right, so I just want to introduce the board to Officer Jeff White, who was appointed by me in consultation with our police department and Chief Perrin. Jeff comes to us with experience. He comes from the Bolton Police Department, a couple of years there, was selected for the Mass State Police Academy, decided he liked community policing better. He has a bachelor's degree in Bachelor of Science in Criminal Justice from Springfield College, and also worked at Pittsburgh State as an officer. So we're happy to present him to the board for any questions and to notify you of this appointment.
Welcome aboard.
Yeah, welcome aboard. I bet you didn't think your first challenge as a Hubbardston police officer was going to be personal hygiene.
No, definitely that and getting online and doing this. Two newbies for me. So definitely, definitely a weird time we're living in.
All right, well, we have, you know, you did research, too, and you've been around a little bit. But we have, you know, the utmost respect for our police force and have such a good reputation I've had for such a long time. So for them to vouch for you and want to bring you along already says a lot about you. And we hope that you'll take that, you know, to heart and you'll, you'll, you know, sort of carry out your, your duties with that always in mind, is you're representing, you know, not just yourself, but, but your, you know, your well-respected police force and the town as a whole.
Yes, definitely will.
Just for the board, one of the things that was most impressive in my interview, so he went through an interview, he went through the gauntlet with everybody, but Chief and I asked him, what are the most important aspects of being a police officer besides being knowledgeable and protecting the town? Was his feeling that community policing is important, which I know fits into the culture that we have here in Hubbardston. So really looking forward to him working and continuing what we do on the police force. So happy to have him. Thanks for coming out, Jeff, or really just logging in at home, but, you know, you get credit.
Thank you. Appreciate it. It's nice meeting you all of you.
Thank you.
Do we need the motion, Dan?
To waive the notification, yeah.
I move to to accept the appointment of Officer White to the Hubbardston Police Force waiving the notification time period.
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion? On favor?
Yes.
Manus. Okay. All right, anything else, Ryan, that you want to do before we continue on?
Not out of order, no. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, sounds good. So we don't have any presentations here, correct? Hooray. And new business now, item four. So we've done the one-day pour permit. So our next item of business will be the acceptance of the new voting machine, the one that Lori came in and talked to us about a couple of meetings ago.
Okay, so nobody freak out. I'm just going to pop this onto the screen. So we got this from Lori. So essentially, it is the same equipment that she talked about in presentation she gave and the questions that were asked. So this, this document is just formally accepting it. This is important. As the chief executives, you're authorizing the new, the new voting machine. So if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them or to bring Lori back in. If not, we'd be asking you to vote to sign this document and sending it out to you virtually via DocSign tomorrow.
Do you know whether or not, you know, we talked a little bit about the newness of it and how things are going to be changing. Did she give you any, I'm not asking her to come back in. I'm just asking, did she give you any feedback on, on how things have gone and whether people had questions or if it wasn't going well or any of that stuff?
So she hasn't used it yet. For the primary, the old machine was used. This one was on display for anyone that wanted to see it. So we won't have that answer until the next one, but we are pretty confident it'll be good.
Okay. All right, I will make the motion to assign the document to accept the new voting machines.
Second motion.
Discussion. On favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Hi.
Manus. Okay, next item is the COVID-19 response update and discussion. So Ryan, I'm sure you want to sort of take the lead on that. We've seen, we appreciate how almost personally, you've sort of taken the responsibility to make sure you were doing everything possible to not only think of everything, but also inform everybody about that. So I guess I'll just start with that. But if you want to just sort of go into the point of this being where it's at on the meeting.
Sure, I've learned more about municipal government in the last two weeks than, than I think in my entire life. So it's certainly a unique situation. So I'm going to try and just take it, take it in order and walk you through everything that's been done, not just for the board, because I know the board's informed, but also the public. And I'm just calling up some documents, so I don't miss anything here. Spare with me for one second. Okay, so starting at the state level, Governor Baker came out with a flurry of executive orders. The major ones I'll go over, and a lot of people know this, but again, I'm just giving some foundation for what we've done. So the stay-at-home order that was given on the 23rd this week closed local businesses, except for those deemed essential. It also restricted gatherings to 10 or less and just provided a tremendous amount of constraint on folks and asked them to stay home unless they were social distancing and taking advantage of outdoor recreational opportunities that were deemed safe. Also, earlier in the month, Massachusetts State of Emergency was declared, and we saw the closures of school. We have an update on that. For those who haven't seen, schools are now closed through May 4. So originally, it was April 6. Then the order on the 23rd extended it to noon on the 7th, and then today, schools are now officially closed in Massachusetts until May 4. So I am going to call up our town website at this point. Talk about some of the town reaction. So if anybody's looking for information, on the town website, we have this red banner. It says the latest COVID-19, which means coronavirus 2019, right, COVID-19 Response Measures and Information. So if you click on that banner, it takes you to something that I'm updating daily. So this is current as of 5 o'clock tonight. We have zero cases of COVID-19 reported in town. If we did have a case, we would know within hours. The Board of Health, myself, the emergency director would all be notified, and we would put that information out as quickly as possible in a safe manner and a manner that protects people's privacy and security. But right now, we have zero known cases. Towns around us, Berry had a case that was announced today. Templeton has two, and Rutland has one already. So not to speculate, but if we were to be, get a case, it wouldn't be a surprise at this point. So this, any new information will be listed on this page. And then this document called Detailed Response Measures and Information is available to the public. And then anybody who wants help on virtual meetings can, can click on this guidance tab, and there's a few resources there as well. I'll just walk you briefly through the measures. For townwide measures, I've closed all municipal buildings until April 7. That matches the governor's order for stay at home. And then this has been advised to say all school revised, to say all schools have been canceled through May 4. All non-essential Hubbardston businesses are remaining closed. We're asking residents to just follow that stay-at-home order. They are encouraged and allowed to take takeout and to use non-onsite premises, food consumption and drink at our local businesses. But gatherings of 10 or more, anywhere in town or onsite visiting of any restaurants or businesses will be enforced. We don't think we'll have to enforce that because our town's pretty good at following the rules. Gatherings of 10 or more prohibited. The town playground equipment, the courts and the skate parks at both Curtis Park and the schools are closed. Visitors can still take advantage of our beautiful open space in our parks as long as they stay six feet apart. All of our town employees are considered essential, however, because of safety concerns and the fact that we are all essential, I've ordered all of my staff to work from home unless absolutely necessary. So you will see staff in the town offices, but only if they needed to do their jobs. We've been building remote capacity for almost two weeks now. So we can do everything that we normally can do from home to include check the phones, the emails, and respond to people in a timely manner and process everything that needs to be processed. Next section talks about health messages. We're all becoming familiar with those. I'll be working full-time, trying to promote economic activity, and I will be in town when necessary to, to assist and also help our public safety. We are sanitizing the buildings completely this week. That'll be tomorrow, and I'll be facilitating that. We've also added custodial hours. Jerry will be starting that next week to facilitate touchpoint cleanings in other areas of special need. And this talks about the remote working. Our Public Safety Department, they are continuing to operate full-time. You'll see that Chief Perrin has, later in our conversations, has recommended that we go to two full-time officers at all time on 12-hour shifts. And that's to, to make sure that everything is conducted, that needs to be conducted during this enforcement period till April 7. We're just asking that the public recognizes that normally our police officers are very friendly. They'll shake your hand. They'll do all that stuff. We're just asking you not to do that because if we lose any of our public safety officials, then our services are severely downgraded. So we need to keep them safe.
All right, have a question?
Sure.
So, you know, I know it's not necessarily State of Emergency specifically, but when, when municipalities or whatever get into those sorts of things, the, for, and I know it's nothing to think about while we're doing it, because we've got to do what we got to do, but sort of recording everything we do with the thought of potentially asking for some help later on is very important. So is that a discussion that has been had, you know, with the chief or others that may be augmenting things?
Yep. So I've asked all departments to record any COVID-19-related expenses for that exact purpose. So we've had hints that there will be state and federal monies, just like there would be in a snowstorm or some major weather event. We do believe there'll be some reimbursement, but we don't have any guarantees. So like you said, we have to do what we have to do. But we are tracking, right now, the only expenses that we have are over. What we normally would do would be those custodial hours and the sanitation. But we do believe with this new, this new stay-at-home order that we do need to move to a local State of Emergency and add police capacity with the idea that maybe we'd even have to add other capacities in the future if it extends. If that answered your question?
Yep.
Okay, senior service is obviously a very important and vulnerable population to this type of infection. So we've closed our senior center. However, we're still, Shine is still offering counseling for health insurance and other needs regionally, and that number's here on this sheet. We are coordinating with Meals on Wheels, and those are still going out, not coming through the senior center, but being delivered directly to homes. And the phone number's there for anyone that wants to set that up. We have seen an uptick in that service. Friends of the Hubbardston Senior Center have offered to drive and get people medication and groceries. That phone number's on this sheet as well, if you know someone that has that need. Our police department and our senior center volunteers are calling our most vulnerable seniors to make sure that they're doing okay with well-being checks and calls, especially for those who live alone. Egg distribution is continuing, as is produce. We're following all safety, safety measures and asking that people stay in their cars and hand-delivering these. But we're trying to continue that. We're still doing 50 to 70 deliveries of this to include at the Hubbardston House. And our mart's still running. We've limited to just, just medical calls and grocery shopping. And we've asked that if you have flu-like symptoms, that'd be a different phone call. This is for routine stuff, cancer treatments, the things that must go on. In terms of tax collection permits and payments, we're getting a flood of information from the state on, on how to deal with late payments, how to take payments online and not in person because we're not the only town that's doing this by any means. So we're providing that information as much as possible. We're asking people to use the online functions, to use Dropbox, and to call us and email us, and we'll find a way to make sure that your stuff gets done. Just can't get done over the counter like it has been. We've done everything that we normally have done in some type of virtual way for the last two weeks now, and it's working. So very proud of my staff. Inspection services, open-air septic inspections are continuing. We're trying to do building permit inspections through FaceTime and other innovative techniques. But most inspectional services are at a halt, and honestly, we're not getting a lot of permits right now. A ton of legal just came out in terms of how permits can and should be processed. So we'll provide an update when those are more clear. We should know more about that next week. If you have a question about your permit or, or something that you want to do, please call the office, extension 209, or inspect@hubbardsonmass.us, and we will, ma.us, and we will find a way to, to help you virtually over the phone or in emergency cases in person.
I have a question, if you don't mind.
Sure.
In regards to the taxes that you talked about earlier, the, as far as we know, are the penalties still in place or have they waived for late payments, et cetera?
So our tax collector has the ability to waive a certain amount of interest, but they cannot waive late fees or interest payments by law. So it's not a commonly known thing, but we're not allowed to waive those things. However, the state is coming out with a bunch of guidance, a flood of guidance about how to deal with this because this is a once-in-a-lifetime event, hopefully. So we'll know more about that, and we are going to push that out on all of our social media platforms and through emails so that people understand that. We know that people are in a difficult time. We know that there hasn't been clarity on unemployment and other things that people need to survive. So we will do everything we can to work with people, but we're asking people, when they can, to, to pay their taxes normal so we can continue to function.
Thank you.
So the library had its first, trying to get to some good news, its first virtual story time today. Over 50 people participated through Facebook Live, including my kids. That was very cool. We're also working on library book exchange. The building is closed, but we want to make sure that people can still use the library. They need things to do. I talked about the rec fields. We also have our recreational opportunities in our DCR land. People should, should get outside, get a mental health break, get the fresh air, just stay away from each other. Don't touch each other's faces. And then public meetings, this meeting is possible through a change or a lessening of the open meeting law. Everything is still available. Everything can still be requested. However, we're allowed to meet virtually for safety purposes, which we're doing right now on the Zoom platform. So residents should know that any, any meeting will be on the town website under the meeting calendar, and information will be offered for how to get into the virtual chat rooms.
All right. Have Freedom of Information Act requests, you know, modifications been made, do you know?
None.
Okay.
None yet. They're coming, though. It's like a second or third tier thing, as I call it. They're, they're doing the emergency stuff first, and we'll slowly get that guidance. Hopefully, we won't need it, and this will be over soon, but.
Yep.
And then the last thing on this is it's important that people get official information. So get it from the CDC, get it from the town, get it from the Department of Public Health. We're getting information from, from all, all of the sources that, that know things, like when schools close, et cetera. So just be careful with your information like always and try and get it from sources. We've listed a few that are official. And then we've also listed all of Governor Baker's executive orders for people to review so they can understand where we're getting our information. Okay, so that's what we've done.
One question for you. When it talks about the relative to the distribution. So we have our social media outlets, right, for the town. Just to reiterate, you know, so that if anyone's actually watching and wondering who, who's authorized to distribute that information, such as maybe saying that something's official, who at the town is authorized to do that?
So there are only three people, myself, Lori Reed, our town clerk, and Bobby, our executive assistant.
Okay.
So anything that's posted goes or is approved through us.
Thanks.
Okay, so talking about, I know this is a lot of information, but obviously, this is the most important topic we have right now. So what's needed, I'm asking the board tonight to support a declaration of local emergency. We have certain powers as a municipality to enforce things like closing the park, like Jeff was talking about, allowing certain restrictions on payments. We have the ability in an emergency to expend past appropriation, but it's not always clear. So I didn't think we needed this until we asked for, or were asking for this additional police coverage. So I think it's important that we, we do join 100, the other 197 communities that have done this and declare a local State of Emergency, just a document that's found in, and I'll call it up in your folders if you want to do that. It also will give us some clarity from the state and federal level to apply for those grant monies that you were talking about. So in the future, we can come back to that. In the future, what's needed, we'll know more after April 7. So a lot of this is being driven by the governor's stay-at-home order. So if that's extended, we'll be extending, unless the board sees otherwise. But the, the state trumps the municipal in these State of Emergencies. So we just don't know what's going to happen past April 7. I think the May 4 ruling kind of gives us a little bit more clarity than we had yesterday. But again, we don't know. Schools are driving a lot of this. And the budget. So things to know about the budget, our revenue is going to take a massive whack while people are staying at home, not pulling permits, and with a lessened ability to pay their bills. So it's going to have a big impact on our budget. We're trying to control our expenses as much as possible and readjust our expectations in terms of what we're going to be able to bring in. That is a full update. Pending questions from the board. We can talk about some of the other aspects of this, like the State of Emergency.
Well, have, have, you know, sort of the buzzwords like furlough and, and that sort of stuff come up yet?
Yeah, so furlough is typically for state and federal employees. For our employees, I've ordered that all of our employees, full-time and part-time, be paid at their normal rate through the end of the year. We have that money appropriated. We will have the revenue at this point to cover those costs. And I do believe we need to take care of our employees and make sure that they are protected through the end of the year. If this is to extend past the current stay-at-home order or others, then certainly, we're going to have to have, have different conversations. But we are maintaining our employment levels, and the schools are as well as of now.
Ryan, a question for you. When you were saying our revenue is going to take a big hit, et cetera, understandably so. Have you heard anything where the school department may be having to take a look at their budget? We're not going to be the only town that's going to take a hit.
No. So as part of my later budget conversation, the budget's completely stalled for next year. And to be quite, to be frank, schools are completely focused on providing, how they're going to provide virtual school services and whether or not they're going to be able to open up this year. So I think that's been kind of settled by this May fourth ruling. And they'll be able to look at things past, you know, this week. So I'm guessing in the next week or two, things will pivot back to, okay, what do we do next? But right now no one's focusing on FY twenty one. So we get a clear picture of what twenty looks like, but I do think there'll be a budget impact at some point.
Thank you.
I would think just that one more comment on that. So that I know that they're going to be going through a, a new teachers' union contract soon. They are now, right? So, but I'm sure just as you talked about how much I think it's absolutely the right decision to, to continue with what we can afford through the end of the year. I'm sure that, um, because that question did come up to somebody to me was, you know, the school not being in session. Are the people, the teachers and everybody still doing the work they should be paid for? And A, the answer is yes. And B, the answer is I'm sure that's in a contract, um, stated.
Yeah, and some tricky things come up. I'm sure you'll think about these, but we have contracts with people that are, we've said we'd pay this through, through this service. We're not getting those services. So legal is in, in most towns are looking at, what do we do with these contracts now? Do we pay them through the end of the year? What, what do they look like if this continues? So just want people to know that we are looking at all of these things, trying to understand what we can and can't do legally, morally, and all the other things that we need to do as a town.
Okay, all right. Well, is that, um, wrap up the, um, current update?
So if the board is, um, is willing, like I said, I am recommending that we do declare a local state of emergency.
Do you want to make a motion?
I'll pop what it looks like up on the screen. It's, it's not a, it doesn't add any powers to the community. It just clarifies things and states where we are. So it lists a bunch of stuff that's happened, right? It's stuff that people know the facts. And then it says because of the disastrous nature of this in terms of the economy and the way it affects our community. Because of, um, your board, that myself, the emergency director and the board of health have determined that we need to take some measures and steps and protect our people. That we would be declaring this local state of emergency in order to signify the seriousness of this and what we need to do to, to move forward and get past it.
Ryan. So you want to motion?
Oh, go ahead. Go ahead with the motion. My question.
Okay, I make a motion that as, as the board is selecting the town of Hubbardson, that we declare a local state of emergency due to the coronavirus crisis.
I'll suck it now.
Good discussion, Jamie.
Yes, um, Ryan, under the agreement with the police department, it said that a, we have to man a, some sort of a, um,
It's getting hard to understand what they're saying.
Is that true? Did you get that, Ryan? Do, uh, under the police agreement, it said that we have to man a, uh, when we're under a state of emergency, there is a, uh, something has to be manned by the police department. Is that true?
Um, not, not on the contract, but Chief Perrin has said, um, and recommended that for several reasons, we, for the, at least until April seventh, we, we guarantee a two man shift at twelve hours per man. Uh, one being the unfortunate likelihood of increased domestic violence, another being police safety and then the ability to enforce, um, enforce this governor's order. Now, we're not looking, this isn't a martial state of law or there isn't going to be some serious enforcement. It's going to be, um, just reminding people to keep distance, et cetera. But there are shifts where there's only one officer right now and to ask officers to deal with, with what this might look like for the next, uh, ten to fourteen days alone. Uh, the chief is strongly recommending that we, we guarantee the shift, which comes with an additional cost of, of about a thousand dollars a day.
Um, Brian, if you pull up, I can't access it right now, but the email that we got from the chief.
I can, yeah.
That one of the offices could be used to man this, um, what's that?
Oh, I understand what you're saying. So the emergency operation.
Email that came from the chief.
Yeah, I'm trying to, I'm sorry, just give me one second.
Yes. Yes, can, can that be done by volunteers? Does it have to be done by the police department or can it's? Okay.
I want to make sure that I give you the right answer there. So let me look that up.
Yeah, I, I didn't know if.
So it, in this sentence, he's saying if the board decides to call a state of emergency, the police department would need to establish.
Something Dennis, so Donald could do. I didn't know if that was something Dennis could do or volunteer or if it had to be manned by the police department.
So I would look into that, but, um, an E O C can be mobile. So it doesn't mean that we have to dedicate one person to just doing that. They can do multiple things. But I will make sure that, um, and see if we can use volunteers for that. I know that Dennis is going to be involved. We're going to stand up a emergency management meeting tomorrow in order to talk about some of these things.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
No.
I, I don't, I don't know. Jeff, did you want to say something?
No, I was saying I moved the question and take the vote, yeah.
Right, okay. Okay, so all in favor? Yes?
Yes.
We have three S's. Okay, we have an I and a thumbs up. Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Dan, I'm sorry, you have to do a roll call. That's my fault. I should have said that.
Uh, so Dan, yes, Jeff?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Chris? Jamie?
Yes.
Okay. That was good, unanimous. Okay, that's not insignificant.
No.
All right, so you should, can we move on?
Yep.
Okay.
Unless there's any more questions about COVID nineteen, that's pretty much all I've been doing lately.
Sure. Anyone else have anything else they want to, uh, ask or, or add? No, okay. All right, so we're, we're on to, uh, the planning board discussion. Uh, Alice, um, I want to make sure you're still, you're still here and you're still, uh, um, present. There you are. Hi.
Welcome.
Well, you gotta unmute it, I think. And Francois.
They're both muted.
And Christina, you guys are muted.
It's on the lower left hand of your screen where it says mute, there's a microphone. Lower left hand of your screen.
Alice, you're muted. Just hit the mute button on the lower left and you'll be able to talk.
There we go. Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you. Francois, speak.
I can, uh, I can hear you all.
We can hear you. Christina, can you just say hi?
Hello.
Hi. All right, so we're here. Thanks for coming, guys. So the, the items we have, Alice, it doesn't matter to us, uh, discussion wise, how you want to do it. But the items we have, I'll just say them in order and you can just, uh, say whether or not, I'm sure you've seen it too, but solar bylaw revisions, associate member residency requirement, master plan, final steps in funding and earth removal bylaw revisions. Okay to go in that order, starting with the solar bylaw? Okay.
That's fine. So we're going to split it up and I was going to talk about the solar bylaw first.
Okay, and Alice, Alice, if you need a document pulled up, let me know, okay? And then I won't talk anymore.
Uh, all right, I better, I, I'll try to walk through it and the board can decide if they want to see it. Um, it, it, it was in the package that was distributed, uh, this, this proposed bylaw because it's more detailed than you're going to want me to talk about tonight. But, but basically, um, we have had complaints about the visibility of, of solar fields by neighbors and, um, concerns about sighting issues. So, um, you know, we're not anti-solar and we know this field we have produced ninety two thousand in revenue for the town last year. We're just trying to balance these interests. So we looked at, there was a model bylaw, a very extensive study done following a moratorium in Ethel. Um, and they were using a Tufts group. Um, and they put together a model bylaw, which, uh, we reviewed and looked at some of their, of their ideas, which might be useful in blunting, blunting some of the visual impact of solar fields and address some of the problems. So these are the things we came up with and we would propose amending our solar bylaw to include these provisions. If, if it's something that we get to town meeting, um, you know, we have consensus and support on. So the first change would be to prohibit the sighting of solar fields on ridge lines and hilltops and hillsides where they would be highly visible from town. The second one would be, uh, and these all come out of the model bylaw, would be to require a submission as part of a special permitting process of sight line and photographic overlay studies to show where the solar field would be visible from any point within three hundred feet, of a, a public road or residential building. And where if you went to the middle of this, the most visible site from the community and you did a photo study of what you would see, where you could see that point from in town. So these are techniques that are available to licensed landscape architects and people like that. Third change is we'd like to increase the minimum lot size for a solar field right now is one point eight acres. And we would like to make it ten acres. All the fields we have in town are much bigger than ten acres. And that would prevent people from using smaller slivers of land and putting solar fields in neighborhoods. Uh, we'd like to revise the setbacks from fifty feet, just, which is how far the solar panels have to be now from the road or the neighbor to seventy five feet. Uh, we'd like to discourage clear cutting of forests for solar installations, which is part of, uh, actually a state plan right now. And right now we, you're allowed to, the setbacks are fifty feet. And if it shades the solar panels, you can cut it up to fifty percent. So essentially it's twenty five feet. And what we want to do is change it to seventy five feet for the setbacks, the solar panels, and then not allow any cutting within the buffer zone. So those are the changes we'd like to make. Uh, they're in writing in your package. We submitted them to Bill Murray, who's our, you know, our consultant. And he did, um, some modification of the language in them to make them more, um, mostly more detailed. So that the, an applicant would know what kind of plans they had to submit to satisfy the, the, um, overlay and sight line requirements.
Alice, you kind of touched on it a little bit, um, when you, you, you just made sort of an aside comment after one or two of the examples. But the, you know, you guys obviously didn't just dream all of these up. Um, you had referenced some sort of state doc or whatever. Where, where are most of these from?
They're from a model bylaw that was commissioned from, by Ethel.
Yep.
Ethel had a one year moratorium because it was a solar field that had everybody up in arms. It was on a ridge line and highly visible. So they, they hired this group from Tufts that came in and put it together, a model bylaw. I don't know whether it's in effect there. I think their goal is to pass it at this annual meeting coming up. Uh, but those, those were all recommendations by their team out of Tufts on how to, on this model, model bylaw, what we did was we compared that bylaw to our bylaw to try to pinpoint some of the ways to solve the visibility issues mostly, which is what people are complaining about.
Okay, that's my next question is, is, and I'm not asking for names, but, um, when you say people, I mean, is this, is it, um, people within the planning board or is it, is, yeah, one person or, or I guess, you know, sort of just going to that a little bit?
I think the, the biggest complaint we got is, or is the person across the street from a solar field on Williamsville Road, um, where they were supposed to build an earth mound and have plantings on it. And it's just very ineffective at screening that solar field. And they believe strongly that we didn't, that the planning board should have been tougher. They shouldn't have let the cutting to go, go on in the buffer zones. They should, that it's a very industrial gate that leads into it. So that was a number of sessions. We're still working with them. We did go back, was the first field, I think, in town. And what we've asked the developer to remediate some of those issues. And, um, now I'm blanking on his name. Another frequent person that attended all of our, um, sessions, just said many, many times, you know, he'd like to see this amended. And other people have mentioned it to us. I mean, it's not an uproar, but we think we'd rather put some protections in place rather than have to permit a field that's going to generate.
Is anyone else having difficulty hearing Jamie? Cause I can't hear him or barely understand. It's always breaking up.
Um, I don't know that I can do any better.
No.
You're fine now. It's Jamie just said something, I think.
Yeah, I think we're all experiencing the same thing. So Jamie's connection isn't, isn't quite there. He's frozen now, I think, unless he's really good at standstill.
So Jamie texted that the gate is required? That's what he chatted in.
Is this a question to me?
Probably.
The gate, yes, they have to be fenced and gated, gated, solar installations.
I have a question for you, Alice. On the field that you are talking about that, uh, I guess is across the street from someone. Is that the one that years ago, as I recall, the, when they were installing it, they even may remember the two, they overcut down of trees and then I thought at one point they had promised that they would replace the ones that they weren't supposed to take down to begin with. That, that. Have they ever do that? Have they ever do any planting of trees?
They.
You know, it's.
That was mostly, those trees were cut in a wetland. And so the conservation commission handled much of that and it was kind of before my time as chair. But I think it was the same operator, I believe.
Yeah.
But, but these complaints just dealt with what this man sees from his yard, looking across the street into the solar field.
The gate was required.
What's that say, Ryan?
It says, Jamie typed in, the gate is required. He said, I feel solar is being restricted a little too much. It's a great form of green energy.
I agree.
Is it? Is the main objection increasing the size or, the setbacks or is there one point in particular that you think is too restrictive?
You know, I, I agree too. I mean, that's just, it does feel like, you know, and one of the things that we've, uh, sort of had a success with in town that we're, we might be going a little bit too hard on, um, on restrictions to make people just want to pop over to a, a neighboring town. So I, I, you know, I think I have the answer for it, but it does feel like it's, it's a little restrictive. And I know that first one sucked because they overcut. Not only did they overcut, we didn't have in our bylaw that you needed to have a bond. So they didn't, we couldn't really bind them too much either because we could say, go fix it, but they, we didn't hold any money to do it. And then we changed things to create a bond the next time we did it so that we had money to do it in the event that they. to do it in the event that they didn't want to do it, or they wanted to leave, or whatever else. So, it was sort of a tough learning experience there. I just, I'm a little afraid that we're, we're, we're changing based on some things that we know we may have done wrong and fixed since then. So, I, you know, I don't know. Again, but the ridge line thing, stuff like that makes sense to me, right? You don't have to weigh up on a ridge line, but all the other, not all the others, some of the others may, 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 may make it a little too restrictive, I think. That was what I was thinking too.
Jamie wrote, "Consider a five-acre limit." You know, that, that would be okay with us too. We just think that every two-acre lot, you know, shouldn't be accessible for a solar field, I think.
I, I hear you.
But we could consider five, you know?
No, I actually like the increase in the buffer zone. I think that's an important thing. So, if a field does go in next to a, you know, residence, they don't have to do it. Did you hear any of that?
Don't have to do what, Pat?
I, I agree with the set increase in the setbacks.
Okay. Well, I know you have many things on your agenda, and we have some other things to talk about, but we'll, we'll come back to this, and maybe we'll do changes with the five acres and leaving in the setbacks. I do think that asking as part of special permitting for sight distance studies is not outrageous, you know? I could ask, I could talk to Bill Murray and ask how much that would run an applicant to have to do a sightline and photo overlays as part of the permitting process?
That's a good idea. It could be easy as like a drone up there for a couple hours doing some sort of stuff that we don't understand, right? It could be pretty easy. So, it'd be nice to know somebody who does that, to know whether or not there's a developer who's going to want to spend X amount of money to even bother with it.
Okay, so I'll get back to you on those. You want to go to the other sections?
Yeah, sounds good. Thanks for moving along.
Okay, so, actually Francois's going to take two on the list, which is the associate member residency requirement. Can you switch to Francois?
Sounds good.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
About a year ago, in the town meeting, and as you all may remember, and so I think it is something that our board basically considered, at this point in time, the associate member gets, gets voted on by the, by the, well, what gets recommended, I should say, by the, by the planning board, and then gets voted by the Board of Selectmen, is not required to be a member of, or be a citizen of the town. So, our recommendation here, and what we are planning on doing here is, is to include a condition that the associate member of the planning board should also therefore be a resident of the town. Keep in mind that there are two sections in the bylaws. One is the zoning bylaw, which is Article 7, Section 6. And then the other one would be the general bylaw, which the planning board is recommending that the Board of Selectmen also consider revising in order to ensure that the associate member that is part of the planning board, be also included as a person who has to be a resident of the town. I'm open to any questions that you may have. It's fairly simple.
Is that just the, Francois says, Jeff, is that just a simple task of just adding and changing words, or are we doing something different, having to change the bylaw?
There are, there are changes to the bylaw in the sense that the wording of the bylaw needs to be changed. So, in the cases of the zoning bylaw, we would add a statement to the fact that the associate member would be required to be a resident of the town. And we would therefore also ask that the Board of Selectmen, in conjunction with the change that we're proposing on the zoning bylaw, that they make a change to the general bylaw, also including that same wording.
So, I think the only real drawback of this would be if we thought there weren't going to be enough people to fulfill a position, right? I mean, what really other drawback can there be than that? I don't know that we're looking for really a third party for that sort of position, important position at that. So, if evidenced by our most recent, you know, vacancy in that position, it didn't feel like there was any, going to be any problem with that. So, this doesn't, this doesn't seem like a bad idea to me.
I think it's a great idea.
I'm in favor of it.
So, again, from our point of view, it is really something that would have to be jointly done between the planning board as well as with the Board of Selectmen. Christina has pointed this out, and I think that Christina can help us bridge this here and ensure therefore that the two bylaws be amended simultaneously, you know, in a manner that the wording would be, would be coordinated. And my suggestion here therefore would be for us to work along with Christina and also with Bobby, maybe, to make sure that we have the right wording, and then make sure that we are presenting this here jointly to both boards, and then we get a final, a final say on this here.
Sounds good.
Thank you. Back to you, Alice, if you want to go to the next one.
Okay.
One question before you do. On the bylaw, I've changed there, after it's gone through the two boys ourselves and you, would this be something that has to then be brought before the town, in town meeting?
Yes.
Yes, that would have to be.
Thank you. I have to myself.
Yep, it is, it is a change to the bylaws, in this case in plural, so as a result of that they will be presented.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Back to Alice, I heard.
Let's take four instead of three next, which is the earth removal bylaw. And Francois's going to talk about that first as well, but I just wanted to say first that, you know, the earth removal bylaw is a general town bylaw, but the planning board is the enforcer of it. So, this would have to be an amendment sponsored by you, is the select board, but I'll let Francois describe the problem, okay?
By the way, I just wanted to confirm, can people hear me okay? I know that some of, some individuals are having problems. Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you okay.
Now, yeah.
Okay, good. So, the earth removal bylaw really came to bear, came to us as a result of information which we received from one of the members of our board, where they understood and noticed or saw that there was actually earth removal taking place in one of the pits that we had. And according to the general bylaw, Chapter 21, on the earth removal, it is our understanding that at this point in time, a permit is not required, meaning there's an exemption if the rate of removal is less than, or equal, they think it's up to 500 cubic yards per year. Let me just explain what that means. If you think of the largest trucks that we really have out there on these roads, they're pretty much capable of taking roughly about 30 yards. That would mean that there's roughly about 13 to 14 of these trucks that basically can remove earth from a particular site during a year. Let me also indicate that in order for us to, in order for that, for that permit to really be in place, you have to only really have 1,000 cubic yards, which means that in a matter of two years, you can, for all intents and purposes, already, without, without pulling a special, that, that permit, you can, in essence, remove the material that you need, and therefore, for all intents and purposes, this creates a big loophole. And from our perspective, what we are suggesting here is, is that this loophole be shut, and so that the, that, that in the future, any kind of removal be therefore limited. And so that, instead of having a 500-yard cubic, cubic yard exemption, that we basically indicate that any kind of removal be, be requested that there, that a permit be pulled. Again, just, again, I just want to make sure that you understand the reason why this is coming up. It's coming up because of the fact that 500 yards is a significant amount, that within two years, you for all intents and purposes, can already take out this equivalent amount that you would typically take out from a, from, from any of these sites, and it would require a normal permit. And that's the reason that this is actually being requested from the planning board to the select board for your consideration, that you make a change to the earth removal bylaw as a result of this here.
Got it.
Yeah, how would that affect a building lot? If somebody was reworking a building lot and had to remove fill in order to put a house, I think the 500 yards, that's really not a lot of dirt in, in my eyes. I, I don't know, I think that's kind of restrictive, bringing it down to that amount.
Can I answer that? There are standard exceptions for adding fill to a, to a yard, for septic systems, for, there's a whole list of exceptions for all the standard things, you know, the non-commercial uses you'd want gravel for in this town that are listed in it. And then for some reason, at the bottom of that list, there is this 500 cubic yard exception. So, the other ones would all, you could eliminate that, and you'd still have, you can bring fill to grade a lot, you can bring, you know, gravel for a septic system, those are exceptions that don't require the gravel operator to have a permit.
I think that might be there. I don't really know, but that might be there, because whenever it was put back in there, it was a, "Well, it's my land, and if I want to move some dirt," you know, I'm not talking huge amounts, but that was just a number that was picked, "Then I want to be able to move some dirt without going to you guys and getting approval," that sort of thing. So, there might be some of that in there.
But it's a big amount. It's 13 major gravel trucks full, you know?
But you, you could, you could haul 13 loads in one day. I, in my opinion, a gravel company isn't going to profit off of moving 500 yards a year to get around the loophole. That, that's my interpretation of it. I mean, you, you can haul 13 loads easily in a day. I, I don't see the reason for changing.
But don't you think the gravel permits, the owner of the, the gravel pit should have a permit to do that? That's the issue.
Christina.
Permit to allow gravel to be removed.
Yes, please. The other issue is that because the planning board is required to monitor these things, there's no way for us to know if 500 cubic yards or 2,000 cubic yards are going out a year. All we know is that there are truckloads coming out, and if this is allowed, this loophole is allowed to remain open, we would have to increase monitoring somehow through the planning board to find out exactly how much gravel is coming out of every pit in town.
Because there's no reporting.
Correct. And that's one of the biggest issues that we are encountering at this point in time is, is that unless there's somebody out there fully monitoring this here, it really becomes a situation where it's their word against, you know, the town's word for all intents and purposes. And so, having this loophole means that anybody can basically haul anything out there. I think it becomes, it, it becomes really more of a matter of making sure that abuses are not taking place, and that it be accountable, the accountabilities of anybody who is actually from specifically the gravel pits, removing any kind of material, that they inform not only the planning board, but they basically attest to the amount of material that they're actually intending of removing.
So, that, that still then would be a candidate, potentially, we're just talking here, to be, to leave that amount in there, 500, or if that catches, whatever, 500, but just have to notify and provide documentation, you know, does it have to be eliminated? Meaning, can we just put a condition on it that would maybe make it, because I hear you, Christina, that makes sense, you know, what you, what you said. So, but it, does it, is there a way that we can not eliminate it, I guess, is what I'm saying, and just provide something so that there, there needs to be some sort of notification or record keeping?
I think that's really the, that is bottom line, what we're, what we're suggesting is, is that the, there, there has to be some form of a permitting that needs to take place. So, I think from that perspective, the permitting is not that you are not allowed, it's just simply that you are basically notifying the town through this process that that is actually going to happen, and you have to declare the quantity that you are removing for the purposes of ensuring that it does not exceed, it does not exceed what is actually being, you know, what, 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 what the permits are required, what the permit is required to, to be there.
But then are you required for reclamation? You know, I hear you, and, and I guess that, that would sound better to me. I guess if, if something was going to be done, is that all you had to say is, "Look, we're, we're removing this area, and there's 500 yards, it's my land, but I'll give you a note that says that's what I'm doing." But as far as, you know, whether or not further conditions come on that, once that notification is made to the planning board, are they then bound to other requirements that, that we need to talk about now?
Just to jump in, because people can't see it, so Jamie has typed that 500 yards is fine, shouldn't be a permit, it's too restrictive. Then he asked if there's a cost to pull a permit, and then commented that notification makes sense. So, just wanted to add that, because people can't see the chat.
Thank you. So, I guess the question would be, is there a cost to the permit? And it sounds like Jamie was with a notification, kind of what I just said, which is fine, we notify you, but A, is there a cost, and B, are there any special conditions that you then get bound to after you make that formal notification?
Well, I think that at this point in time, there is no cost because of the fact that there's no permit required. If we decided that a permit would be required, or at least a notification be required, a cost could be theoretically associated, but it could also be exempted, as long as it's less than 500. And then it becomes a more of an issue of what, what does the monitoring require? So, does this mean that you're going to have somebody there for the duration of the period of time, monitoring this here, and what is the cost associated with this here? Those are all questions that are very fair, that need, that need to be asked. It's not necessarily something that we are bringing up as, as part of this here, we're just, A, bringing it to your attention, that we have had incidences already, where it has not been very clear that what quantity has been removed, that it basically opens up, in our view, a giant loophole where there's, there's no monitoring taking place, there's really no way for us to ascertain that less than 500 yards have been removed. And so, there's, where's the checks and balances, is, is kind of the question that, that needs to take place.
To that, to that point, Francois, I mean, I was thinking about that, as you guys are talking about this, just for purposes of conversation, who would in fact monitor? Would it be the police or a spot check? How do you monitor, monitor something like that without actually having someone on the premises being there?
Christina?
At the present, because this is not in the zoning bylaws, we can't officially call on a Z E O except to monitor. We can't call on him to cease and desist, because it was put into general bylaws, it is not in zoning bylaws, so we run into sort of a gray area with regards to enforcement. Also, if we have someone out there monitoring, how are we making them pay for it? We don't have anyone who can, you know, go and monitor, or, you know, someone we can pay to go out and monitor how much is being removed.
I'd say then, I guess my answer would be, you know, whatever decision, you know, is ultimately comes to, it doesn't have to be permanent, right? So, it could be, we're going into this, we're, we've had nothing before, and now we're going to have, okay, there is this notification, and people have to self-monitor, and if it's determined that that's not working, we can readdress, right? I mean, this is not something that we have to decide all the conditions to it on the way in, sort of incrementally is a way many things are done, and might not be a bad idea to discuss.
Why don't we come back to you with a revised provision?
Sounds good.
That allows the 500- That allows the 500 upon submission of a much smaller fee and notification to the planning board.
Yeah, all right, that that that'd be something I love to talk about.
Try to do that?
Yeah.
Can I ask that, can I ask a question here?
Sure.
What is the what is the concern about how much is being taken out? It seems like there's an underlying root cause that we want to make this change. And I don't understand what the cause is.
Because you're to remove gravel, you're supposed to have a permit that doesn't like scrape the gravel below the water table. It doesn't create hazardous walls. It's a regulated business for good reason. So we had all these gravel pits in town. And as soon as a permit was required, people quit, have just kind of abandoned them. So we're trying to get them to restore them and to not do further damage to the land. And just, you know, if you want to remove gravel, you got to come and get a permit and show us your restoration plan and where you're taking that gravel from.
I think Alice presents a very good point, and that is is that I can take 500 yards out. But if you're going straight down 500 yards, you can suddenly go down to the water level. It's it's just the manner in which the 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 material is being removed that can potentially cause problems to the surrounding areas and the surrounding environments. Plus, it could be become a hazard if it's done inappropriately. And that's why it is a that that is why it's a regulated. That that's why it is regulated in general.
It's also, you know, we're mostly a residential community and it's a very loud, intensive use. You know, in the middle of the neighborhoods.
Correct.
You know, people on Pitcherville complain. And if you go and look at the about the these gravel pits, they are like moonscapes. Nothing grows in them. There's enough, no effort to restore them. They are, you know, 30, 40 acres of just scraped land. So they are, you know, they should be regulated. And they are regulated, except they're not regulated for this 500 cubic yards. Nobody has to go get a permit if that's all they're removing.
Right, well, I think you already said it. I think you 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 just, you know, that's why we're discussing it, right? So we'll sort of come back and and take a look at things after 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 you've had some time to think about it and go from there.
Okay, last article on our list, because I know you guys have a long agenda, is just. The master plan has been just coming along great. And we've had a lot of lock in securing funding for all the chapters, but we're now we're down to the final chapter. Which is the implementation chapter. And there's no grant, we're told, that covers that. And the quote we've been given by M R P C to help us do that. Us, meaning the town, is $14,000. So we need to is to to finish the plan, we're going to have to come up with that. And arguably, the implementation chapter is, you know, the most important chapter, right? It's now you've got all the data and you know where we are, where do we go from here? So the planning board has some money we're willing to 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 help with, but we don't have the 14,000. So we we're coming to you with that issue.
Yeah.
Where we are in the master plan process.
Okay, if I could just first say that that I cannot believe we're this far along. If somebody had told me a few years ago that we were going to get to a point with spending overall so little money. Like for this massive achievement. I mean, I am so proud of all the work you guys have done on this because it's amazing to get it this far. And you've built, you know, momentum with M R P C, they're proud of it too, just talking to them. So just being a part of it. So I I it's, as you know, every penny matters. It's so hard for us to to figure out exactly where stuff's going to come from. But I it I I I feel like that's something we have to do. Done so much work to get to this point that that we need to figure out how to cross the finish line.
Well, thanks. And we really need to thank Ryan, who got these grants lined up for us and and the M R P C people who are really helpful. There's no way a planning board could have done the kind of work.
Absolutely.
That went into this. So I leave it up to you to get back to us on how we want to fund it.
All right, we'll get back to you.
Okay, that's it. Also, you know, I know town, we'll try to organize these things, but I don't know what you're going to do with town meeting this year. So you let us know. Is it going to be? You know, a full annual meeting or kind of abbreviated with a meeting in the fall? If you can let us know what you're thinking as you go along, particularly with the signed by law, which we're trying to do. It would affect us.
Ryan.
Okay, so, thank you.
Hold on.
So legislation has been pending for both election and town meeting. So the town moderator has the ability to extend 30 days in any town meeting. The elections were, we were just allowed to push them to the end of June. So my recommendation to the board is that since ours are so late anyway, that we should wait as long as possible to decide what we're going to do. If this extends past July 1, which I know no one wants to hear. It's going to be a whole new set of rules. So right now, we should plan, in my recommendation is that we should plan for keeping the June 2nd town meeting and the June 9th election. Until we get more clarity on on where the world is. Push it to as late as June as possible, if we think that might help. And then everybody will be scrambling after that, so.
Okay, well, we will also, because our, you know, we try to meet twice a month and that's kind of been interrupted too. But we'll try to get back to you with a sign by law then as well, which is in a finalization process.
Okay, that's good. Laurie, by the way, just just, I'm sure you guys saw that she said she's online if if we need to ask any questions. Anyone have any questions, I guess, on on elections? Ryan, do you need her to expand on that any further?
I I don't need her to expand unless she wants to chat, that she wants to talk. Again, our elections are are late, so we have some wiggle room here. And if we need to make a decision, it's going to come down pretty clearly what we have to do. Because moving ours would mean everybody's moving past July 1, right? So that's where we're at right now. Okay, monitoring it very closely because we know how important it is. One thing that the board should consider is potentially extending the warrant deadline so that maybe to the end of May or the end of April, early May, so people have the maximum amount of time to submit. Based on these virtual meetings, et cetera. But other than that, I would recommend that we just wait for now.
I agree. I think that, you know, two weeks from now, our next meeting or whatever it is, that this could be a whole new thing. So for us to try to predict anything right now is probably just premature.
Can I ask one last question? Is zoning bylaws require a public hearing on the bylaw is proposed? Are we proposing to do public hearings electronically like this?
So Alice, I sent out some and I can send out some links to K P laws guidance on land use and stuff. Some of the guidance we've been getting from legal is that this is kind of a gray area, so they've been interpreting it.
Okay.
Some towns are choosing to do it virtually, some are not. So I think you and I should have a conversation on on what you want to do. And then we can ask town council to see how that can work.
Okay, thank you.
All right, well, thanks a lot, Planning Board, for for all of that. So we'll be talking to you soon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the host community agreements for adult use marijuana establishments. Discussion and potential vote. So Ryan, why don't you, we've got A through F here. Want to summarize what we need to do?
Okay, so just want to remind everyone, the by our bylaws and by state cannabis laws. The hosted community agreement is the town saying, if you're going to bring marijuana to our town. This is this is what that's going to look like and and this is what exceptions and certain rules would be in play. It's not saying that marijuana can come in or not. It's not permitting marijuana to come in or not. It's just establishing the contract. If you're bringing marijuana to Hubbard, then this is what it looks like, which can be confusing. So tonight, the only the only agreement that we may potentially vote on, and I'll call it up on the screen and walk you through it, is the retail H C A. Which is allowing a marijuana establishment in town that would sell retail marijuana products. The reason why that's the only one is the other ones are still under negotiation, but I have some sticking points that I want the board to give me guidance on. So I can walk through the retail one and then get to the sticking points or however you want me to do it.
Yep, do it that way.
I'm going to call it up on the screen. Okay, so a lot of the, a lot of this is boilerplate. But this would be an agreement for the adult use of marijuana at a retail establishment for. Forgive me, I gotta have to get the address here.
56.
56 Gardner Road. So this is for the the opening of a retail store, not a cultivator or any other type of marijuana establishment. So walking through the agreement, beginning part is just the establishing the parameters. The town is doing this, the retailer is doing that. This is all approved to form as to legal and consistent with every agreement that's been signed. In terms of annual payments, it's just establishing what annual payments will be made. So since marijuana is a unique industry, we are saying that there would be an impact to the community of Hubbardson if marijuana was brought here. So by law, we're allowed to assess or charge up to 3% of gross sales. Which which is the maximum amount allowed by by law. So community impact means we'll need to change the way we operate in order to facilitate a marijuana business. So that could look like additional police coverage, additional fire, additional permitting, use of the roads. Just all the different ways that government operates and would be impacted by marijuana coming to town. So this agreement per guidance of the board includes the full 3%. We will track all marijuana related expenses to demonstrate that this 3% is necessary for our town. We've established that there will be a minimum of $30,000 paid to the town from this 3%. So if they sell nothing, they're saying that they will give us $30,000 guaranteed. If they sell above 30,000 in gross sales, then we would get 3% of that of that greater amount. So 30,000 is the floor. Then it gets into when we would pay, when that would be paid. So this matches our normal revenue. A lot of this is just legal, so if you want me to stop, I will. I'm just going to stop at some of the highlights.
Yeah, do it that way. I mean, we've been through this, you, we've had plenty of opportunity to read this ourselves overall. But anything that you want to remind us of or or that has changed, please, please focus on those things.
All right, so section B that I have here on the screen, page three of the document. Based on the board's feedback and feedback from the community hearing that we had. One of the fears was impaired driving or the ability to detect some of the some of the the stuff that comes from the use of marijuana was something that was brought up in the hearing and brought up by the board. So we've asked that a $20,000 payment be made each year in good faith to help fund the education of our police officers and in for drug, drug training, O U I training and for programs like DARE and other community awareness. So that 20,000 repayment would be made outside of the 3% agreement and and they have agreed to pay that in good faith. So that's one thing we were able to get in there. All permits and everything that that normally comes from a business, they've agreed to pay. If there's any consulting, they've agreed to pay. They've paid $4,000 so far for us to do these legal agreements. So us working with the lawyers, no costs have been have been made there. And then this section, section D for annual reporting is all based off of the cannabis control mission law. So there's nothing here. As the board mentioned in in their meeting, first meeting with Damon, they're going to make every effort to hire locally and to use local vendors for their business. Pay all local taxes, work with the police department for for security. One thing here that the board should weigh in on is this live, this idea of having a live access feed at the police department. So there's no objection from the police department, but town council does say that that this would create some liability for us. So whether or not the board wants to keep it in there, we would still have the same police coverage and same security. It's just this is another layer of actually being able to see the facility on our own. We can take this out of the agreement if if the board wants to, based off council's guidance or keep it in if that's what you want to do.
I I mean, we can all have, I I would, I would keep it in. I mean, I I just, I feel like, yeah, there might be some remote chance of a problem. And, you know, shame on us, I guess, if that happened. But feels like the the good it could do far outweighs the sort of random partial, you know, potential bad.
Yeah, I'll keep going. The approval of the manager, so this is standard that the the board has the ability to prove the manager of the facility. That the company would make itself available to the select board if there are any concerns. Again, more more on keeping with all the bylaws and agreements of the town. How to control their wastewater and and other waste is in here. Based off the state state regulations, state laws, and would also be inspected by the state, nothing local. There's a provision in here that's standard that says if if they enter into another host community agreement and there's something negotiated in that 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 we should have gotten, we would get it, which is what limits some of these negotiations. This is a five-year term for this to be revisited. And the rest of it is is essentially legal, legal jargon and approved by our town council. So the main point being the community impact fee, the police coverage, the monitoring of the security and the control over the manager and the agreement over the course of five years, plus following all town, state and federal. Well, there's no federal laws yet, but state and local laws.
Okay, thanks. So I think in in keeping up with what we've talked about throughout this process, this is the next step. To take the next review of the H C A, which is what we've done, we've had council review it. We had the the required public hearings on it. And, you know, received some comment. I haven't heard much since then. I don't know if you guys have or Ryan, if you had much against this. So it's not like we've got this big uproar as far as I know. And and all we're doing is is continuing to check the boxes that we need to. So, you know, I I don't have any, you know, reason to to not continue on with that process. Anybody else?
I'm with you on that. I think we, you know, need to keep moving forward on this. So that eventually we can maybe begin to see some revenue.
Is it, hey, Ryan, do you know if it's fairly common for them to have a live, all facilities to have a live feed in? To the police?
So it's a common request? I I don't have a a market basket analysis, I can I can get that for you. All I know is what council told me and was was put the provision in there based off the feedback of the board and and that community hearing. So council's saying the liability would come from, you know, if you see something, you need to do something about it.
Right, is that what you're worried about, Pat?
Yeah, I mean, if if council advises against it, I would more than likely go with what council suggests, you know? If if it's going to raise some liability to the town, I don't know, that's just my opinion.
All right, we know what. Oh, go ahead.
Do we know what the additional cost of a live feed is and who would be responsible to pay that?
It would be at no cost to us. So the the company would be paying for that live feed. And Damon, who's representing this group at the community hearing, said that. So that he would put that in if people wanted it.
Is this a live feed for retail only or is it the color of the aspect also?
It's only in this retail agreement as of now.
Okay.
I don't know, I guess, so you said town council's gonna kind of, I I just, I would think of just trying to think of how people would feel about a facility. And and yeah, when there may be a little bit of exposure, so I definitely hear you, Pat. But just how the general public would feel to to know at least that there's some constant eyes on them. I don't know, is that better to have than a little bit of liability or a lot? I don't know. I don't know. Is that better to have than a little bit of liability or a lot? I don't know. I'm, I'm just speculating. So maybe, maybe that is something, Ryan, you said, right, we're gonna be getting an actual opinion from them? Or, or did I not hear that right?
No, they, they gave their opinion that.
But they gave it, but did it go into any detail about like what that liability would be? Is, I know you just described it a little bit, but I mean, is this like, is it just that in that it opens you up to something that's undefined?
Correct. It was a general, general concern that having us monitor the facility would make us liable for anything that, that happened at it. Or any suits that might, might come from it. I, I don't know that that's a specific concern of theirs or, or something that they're just advising generally.
Was this something that could just be done, for example, when they're closed? So it's another pair of eyes when the place is locked up. Can, can that, can it be directed that way or is it a twenty-four hour surveillance camera?
Yeah, I don't think that's really the point. I think the, the point a hundred percent is that, say someone's trying to climb over the fence. And the, you know, is our police department, if they saw it, maybe they saw it, maybe they didn't. Are they supposed to then be trying to do something? And if they didn't do something and that person who climbed over the fence either hurt themselves or went and stole something and then ultimately hurt somebody else. With whatever else are we then as a town liable for it? So I think that's, that's more than anything. The more I talk about it, the more I don't like it, I guess. You know, when you think of those scenarios of things that could happen, I just, I think the reason I would necessarily at all be an advocate is just, you know. I guess we could just put up those, the signs that say, you know, video, under video surveillance. And, and maybe there's no video surveillance, but, but still, I don't know. It's, it's a good, I'm glad we're talking about it.
So to read Jamie's comments, if it was recorded for later, this is in the chat, if it was recorded for later and there was a crime, it would be good. Maybe just have it record, not a live feed. And to comment on that, the, the CCC requires. Video surveillance and recordings at any marijuana establishment. So that would already exist. So this is just specific to us having a live feed ourselves, not controlled by the marijuana establishment. Or regulated by the CCC. So that is part of the security that is required. This would be additional.
Alright, I'm, I'm, I'm. I'm, that's good to know.
Ryan, have you got any info on, if somebody brought this up earlier, I apologize. In regards to this kind of a system. Is it being used more or less by, as far as what you've heard by other towns?
I, I don't have a, I don't have a strong sense of what other communities are doing for live feeds. This isn't in the agreements I see around us, so.
Yeah, I mean, hon- honestly, Dan's point that it might make residents feel a little bit more comfortable is, is logical. But I still don't think the liability to the town would be worth keeping it in there.
And I agree more with that now too. Now that I have just heard for the first time that there still is gonna be a way to have video to be able to potentially check. So that can still be posted. People can still know those in, you know, perpetrators or potential perpetrators can still have some sort of notification. That, you know, for real notification that there is video being, you know, happening. Which is just as good as, you know, whether you had a live feed. So I, I have, you know, I agree.
So basically, are you saying then, Dan, that now you are in favor of not doing that?
I am.
Okay. If that were the case, Ryan, what do you need from us?
So. We have negotiated with this company in good faith. This is the, the end of the negotiation as we presented to you. Obviously, I'm hearing that the, the live feed paragraphs have been removed. If the board has no other challenges, questions or concerns, then. And you're ready, you could vote to approve this HCA and sign it so that the process for them could continue.
I was gonna say, can this be signed through DocuSign?
Yeah, we're in a DocuSign world now, so.
Well, I would make that motion to sign the HCA with the removal of that live feed.
Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
It's gotta be roll call.
Dan, yes. Pat?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Okay, unanimous.
Okay.
Significant either.
No, it's a big night. So the, um, the, the other agreements, so the rest of them are cultivators or manufacturers. So for those, I know this board understands, but for those watching, a cultivator produces marijuana and grows marijuana to be used at stores. Manufacturer takes marijuana and makes certain products out of it. And the retail store sells marijuana to, to consumers. So business to consumer. So for the cultivator agreements, there's two sticking points that, that we need the board to weigh in on for the negotiation to continue. And once these points are resolved, the HCA that you just approved would look very similar. So sticking point one is. I told you that there was a minimum of thirty, in this last retail, there was a minimum of thirty thousand. And then anything above that would be three percent. And they also agreed to a twenty thousand dollar community benefit payment. So for the cultivators, they're not agreeing to do a twenty thousand benefit payment. But they are saying that their minimum for, for the community impact fee would be seventy-five thousand. In year, in for up to ten thousand of growing, up to an increments of twenty-five thousand, a hundred and fifty thousand total guaranteed. So if they didn't produce anything, the town would get, if it was a ten thousand square foot grow, seventy-five thousand. Right off the bat. If they obviously grew more than that, we would get more than that based on the three percent calculation. But they won't do the twenty thousand benefit and they won't lessen the guarantee to allow for the twenty thousand dollar benefit. So why does that matter? If the community impact fee went away, the, the community benefit of twenty thousand would still be there. Which is why we were trying to negotiate for that. They don't want that in there and they're signing multiple cultivator HCAs with us. So. The board had said that you wanted the minimum payment and that you wanted some type of community benefit, whether it be scholarship or police, et cetera. So we want to make sure that you're okay with a seventy-five thousand dollar minimum and no community benefit payment. I'll stop there. Yep.
When you say. When you say the community impact fee could go away. Who would it be that would be taking that away?
Alright, good question. So the. What, what we're saying is if marijuana comes to Hubbardson, there's costs associated with that. So we're allowed to charge up to three percent of their gross sales in order to compensate the town for the, for the impacts that marijuana brings to Hubbardson. So we're gonna have to demonstrate. So we're saying that's gonna be three percent. If we can't demonstrate that the three percent is what we're using in order to pay for the services that are increasing to allow marijuana. Then we won't be able to charge three percent after this contract. There is some lobbying and legislation that says there's no impact for bringing marijuana to a town that, that that's kinda made up. So there's a chance at the end of this five-year agreement or before, the state, the Supreme Court, et cetera, would rule that. These community impact fees are not allowed. So that's why it might go away. Now, there's nothing that says it will. It could continue. And I think we should treat it like it is, cuz that's current law. But those are things to know during, during these agreements.
So do we, so obviously we're not voting on this tonight cuz we've got, we're at a little bit of an impasse. What, what's gonna get a pass this impasse here? Is it speaking to Damon again or is he, it sounds like he's pretty dug in on this or? And then the second part of the question is, if we dig in as well, do we really think that? He's, you know, cuz I, I saw it in one of the emails that was out there that we run the risk of, of them just jumping ship and moving on to the next town. They put a lot into this.
Yeah, so I, I would say the impasse is, I mean, how, how far does the board wanna go with this? Do you wanna change the guarantee to a hundred or guarantee to two hundred thousand? Like, there's some wiggle room on that side, I think. He is pretty dug in. The, the lawyers tried, cuz they were doing the primary negotiations many ways. To change this. There's also implications for them in other towns in this particular type of agreement. So they're pretty dug in. The two. You asked what the negatives could be. They could say that we are not bargaining in good faith and challenge us with the CCC in the state. Or they could move and go to somewhere else. So those are the two extremes. I don't think either of those would happen, but it is a strong impasse in my opinion at this point.
Ryan, you said it would impact other towns that they're working. And are you saying, for example, if we ask to increase something and they said yes. They would then have to do that for all the other towns that they are servicing?
Yeah, and I, I apologize. I don't have a definitive answer on that, but that is my understanding that do for one, you do for all. So they're careful, you know, not to over negotiate. And it's based on the same company and the same town. So there's some restrictions, but. They're saying we haven't.
Yeah, if we push too hard, it could be a deal breaker because it's not just gonna affect us. It's gonna have a, a major effect on all the other towns that he presently has business in. And I could, I can't see him easing up on that for our, for our benefit where it's gonna cost them right across the board.
So my opinion, let me just jump in here, Ryan. So we're, we're almost getting into negotiations that shouldn't necessarily be an open session.
Unfortunately, we're not allowed to do them in executive, but yeah.
Right. So I think for this, if you don't mind. I, I think that, you know, considering we're not voting on it tonight, if we could, if you could just summarize this for us again, post-meeting. In the coming days or weeks or whatever, to get us some information exactly on, on the impasse. So we, we have it all focused. If we do that again and then we can separately sort of get back to on our opinion there so that when we come the next time to talk about this. We're, we're ready to, to actually make our own sort of round the table discussion, negotiations and then come up with a solution.
Sure.
Okay. Alright with everyone?
Yeah.
Okay, so can we move on?
Yes.
Alright, so I think we should push off town administrator evaluation. Whether you've got them or not, I, I think that deserves more time. You know, it's already twenty. So unless anyone's got a problem with that, I, I'd rather just push that off to the next time. So that we can give it the appropriate amount of time. Alright?
Yep.
Alright with me?
I do have all of them at this point.
Okay, alright. Well, okay, well, anyway, sorry for that, but I just think that's the right thing to do. Okay, the next item would be the library roof. Let me actually, before I move on first, that doesn't affect, does it affect you from a? The standpoint of moving up a step, moving up to your performance bonus and any effect financially to you?
No, it, the only way, the only way that's done is through the budget, so.
Sounds good. Alright, so it's definite then. Alright, the next item was the library roof CPA borrowing. What do you got first there?
So there's no action needed. I would, this was a placeholder cuz we do have to extend our borrowing. We'll be getting biz on that tomorrow. You'll probably see it at your next meeting, but nothing tonight.
Okay. So moving on to old business, we've got the fiscal year twenty-one budget discussion, you know, that little thing. Based on everything we've got going on here now, is this something you wanna, you wanna, that you haven't already sort of updated us on tonight? Is it something you wanna get into?
Just two things. We talked about one of them, the revenue. That's something that everyone should take note of, or three things I should say. The revenue's important. The schools are halted and I think we should give them the. Benefit out in the space in order to figure out their current operations. And then we had discussions with. If you remember, the dispatch assessment went up considerably. This, we had a conversation with the state and we, there will be a level funding of our dispatch this year.
Alright.
And moving forward. So we were able to address some of that. We're still working on, should we district? How much control of the budget do we have? And, and I'll have more for you on that. But one good piece of budget news is that our assessment will be level funded. So that eighteen thousand or so is, is no longer there, so.
And you, and you won't be getting a Christmas card?
Ever.
Okay, well, sounds good. Thanks for the update. So we're up, you're up again. So the town administrator report?
Let me share that with you. And we've covered a lot of this, so I will move through some of it pretty quickly. Well, all of it, cuz I can tell you want to go to bed. Not bed, but do other things.
Nah, I just, I smell popcorn in the background. It's killing me.
Okay, so. Again, just reiterating that, that for the COVID nineteen, a lot of people are asking questions. A lot of people are nervous. A lot of people want information. So we are dedicated daily to updating that, that red banner link on the homepage and providing it links through social media. So please tell everyone, you know, to go through that, that one-stop point. And if you want any information added that, to let it know, let me know. Budget update, I've covered quite a bit of that already, so I can skip right past that. Department report, again, everybody's working remotely, but we all have the ability to continue to function. Because of, we needed to separate our employees based off of sickness. We've halted non-essential DPW functions until Monday. At that time, we're gonna analyze the stay-at-home order and we feel like the. DPW can operate as long as we take extreme precautions to make sure that they have some social distancing. So they will be working, but in a more limited capacity. They are fully available for emergencies. And have already served in that way during the snowstorm. All of our staff members are answering the phone, responding to emails, processing mail and meeting all deadlines. If anybody has any difficulty reaching any department, they can call me or email me at admin@hubbardstonma.us. And we will jump all over it. So our staff wants to be working. They keep reiterating that they, and they are working. But they, they wanna work the way they normally work and interact with the public and they can't. So anything we can do to help the public, we're there and we're ready to serve.
You getting any complaints?
We are not. People have been great. We get an occasional frustration because people come to drop off things and they're used to handing us checks. We just can't do that right now. But we do meet them outside. I've, I've notarized in the street. We've done all kinds of things to continue services. And we promise that the world will stabilize at some point. Well, I can't promise that, but I think it will.
Okay.
Just gonna change the way that we do business for now and we're just asking for people to help us. What's up, Jamie?
Alright, and do you have the CDC link on our COVID nineteen page and town board page?
I do. So all of the.
Could you?
The CDC, the Mass Department of Health and our local board's guidance are all on that, that guidance document that we submitted.
Great, thank you.
So in terms of financial management, this was the hardest piece for the remote working. So we have the ability to do everything we normally do. Process payroll, pay bills, monitor the status of town's finances. Kudos to our IT department and our staff for. Trading office space and making sure that we can do all those things. Those aren't easy to do. So I appreciate Sandy, Bobby and Kelly. Figuring out how to keep our town running. They're our engine while all this is going on. Some important infrastructure updates. A lot of our capital projects are just halted right now. I think they'll continue, but again, everyone's trying to analyze and, and understand the state home order. And how it impacts everything to include large construction, which is considered essential and will probably continue. But we just don't know at this point. Some good news from the, from the Montezuma Planning Organization, the MPO. So got some information from them. The town center project is on their tip amendment scenarios as a twenty-twenty-two project, not a twenty-twenty-three. So I told you last time we might move up and it looks more and more likely that, that we might move up. So it's good news going from twenty-twenty-three to twenty-twenty-two. It'd be a big win for the town to get the town center projects on the board. And we've met today with Weston and Sampson and MRPC to start our Massachusetts vulnerability planning. The core team, that, I, I don't think they fully know what to expect going in, but we've, we came out of it with a good idea of, of how we're gonna address the town's vulnerabilities. And create a punch list of action items we can do, like fix culverts, fix roads. Address other vulnerabilities in the town, like our, our town energy infrastructure in order to make sure we're dealing with the next fifty to a hundred years of climate change. It sounds a little bit pie in the sky when you're dealing with a pandemic. the sky when you're dealing with a, a pandemic, but we, we are focused on not just the short term, but the long term right now. So our staff is, is working on that.
Good comment on that, because I was on that call too. So, so, you know, y- you look at some of the, the, the charts that they had on there and it was like, okay, what Falmouth did about beach nourishment and all that, and you, you, you want to gloss over a little bit, but Ryan just hit it on the head there. If you just drill down to, to, which is what Ryan did during the call, which is, okay, that's all great, but what for little rural towns like Hubbardson can be done with this money, which there's a lot of money, uh, for it, and it is absolutely things that we need. And that relates to culverts and roads and whatnot, that there's a, some matching money. It's a seventy-five percent, twenty-five percent deal, but there's even sort of creative ways to, to be able to help fund, uh, the twenty-five percent match, uh, from the town. So, uh, you know, all the things we've done in the last few years, including, um, green community and, and that sort of stuff, have gotten us to a point where we can get to be able to apply for, you know, these multimillion-dollar grant potentially. So it's all sort of a master plan and, and this was another step.
Yeah, and, and Jamie just reminded me of trees, right, with our energy infrastructure, and that definitely came up today, is, is how can we mitigate the impact of these winter storms on our, um, for people losing power, et cetera. And that's gonna be a major focus of this group. So not saying we're gonna solve it in a day, but, um, it hasn't gone unnoticed. We've taken everyone's feedback and we're gonna make it part, part of that. So lastly, if you'll forgive me, I just want to, um, just talk about employee recognition. So I, I try and make these very specific so people can see the town staff hard at work, but just generally, just want to thank the staff for, for their response during this COVID nineteen outbreak. So, um, I know that this outbreak maybe hasn't hit everybody personally, maybe it has, but i- it has had a real-world impact on the way we work, on people's lives, on our residents' ability to provide childcare and do their jobs, and there's economic impacts and, and regardless of, of the virus itself, there's a, a real-world impact here. And, um, our staff has done a great job as a group. So our police and fire, they continue to keep people safe despite a great risk of exposure. They're fully exposed, unlike most of us, to, to the public and, and have to interact personally. Our DPW is not only operating, but they provided their same excellent level of snow removal in the middle of a stay-at-home order, which is tricky and unique. And our town hall staff hasn't missed a deadline. They've returned every phone call and email, processed all my requests, and I've, I'm just sending emails all day because, because I got time. Um, they've moved their workstations to their homes, right? So they're just demonstrating the type of resilience that makes what I think go, local government special, that we can innovate, be efficient, and respond. But I just want to thank everybody for caring about their jobs, for taking care of people, for doing way more than I asked, um, in one of the worst environments that I've seen in my life. So we're gonna continue to function as a government, and I want to thank my staff for doing that.
That's great.
Hey.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks for that. Uh, the next item on our agenda are some policies to review, which I think are, are ones that we should talk about, um, tonight, because they're, you know, exactly what, what we're dealing with, which are the use of town facilities and, um, the remote work policy. Uh, so we've got these. Um, Ryan, is there anything you want to a, add to, uh, to this discussion before we, we, um, talk about it?
So we, we've been working on the town facilities one for a while now. This came to us from other towns, from legal. We've been talking about how do we use our town buildings when third parties, nonprofits request? Uh, we keep ourselves safe? Do we charge fees? Do we have just open community space? So I'm just giving you this one tonight for you to look over. This is our last draft for you to talk about, um, use of town facilities and, and what we want to do in terms of slate building, library, public safety. All these buildings are useful space. There's not a lot of community space in town, so, uh, we think it's an important policy. And you never really realize how important space is until it all gets taken away from you too. So we should have this policy in place. But tonight, um, we do need to, if you're willing, take a look at and pass this remote work policy because we don't have one. And everybody's working remotely already, so, um, I don't want to call it an emergency, but we did put together a re- remote work policy based off of my analysis of, of, um, local towns. And you can see, we borrowed a lot from Pittsfield, so I'll make that change right there. But these are, these are, um, what we're looking at in terms of, of what we need to do to make sure that we're taking care of our employees and operating with limited liability while we are working remotely. So, um, removing any typos, I'm asking you to approve this remote work policy as we have something to cover ourselves.
Want a motion? You want a motion?
Yes, please.
Okay, I'll move that we accept the remote work policy as, as presented.
All second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
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 All right, that sounds good. Uh, next item, item eight. Um, so we've done this. This is appointments and resignations. We've done Jeff Free White as a full-time patrolman. We now have, um, an animal inspector, an animal inspector, an alternate inspector, and an animal control officer that we can probably do all at once. Um, so anyone have any questions on this?
Could I, uh, make a suggestion, Dan? Uh, to allow for these motions, could you read the name of the, uh, person that we need to put in the motion and then ask for a motion and that, that way we can say, you know, so, so moved?
Sure. So it was, uh, Kristen Salerno for Animal Inspector, term to expire four thirty-two thousand twenty-one. Cheryl Slack, Animal Inspector, term to expire four thirty-two thousand twenty-one. Alana Masserv, uh, the alternate inspector, term to expire four thirty-two thousand twenty-one. And Alana Masserv, again, Animal Control Officer, term to expire six thirty-two thousand twenty.
And I, I would move that we accept the appointments as presented.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Yes. Okay, uh, and we did the wage authorization, uh, waiving, correct, Ryan? We have nothing else for Officer White?
Yep, just for transparency's sake, um, Officer White's being hired at step two because he's a academy graduate with two years of police experiment, experience, and, uh, will be starting tomorrow.
All right.
For training, local training, and then will be, uh, very soon moved to full-time patrolman.
Okay, uh, so moving on, we have item ten, which is minutes to approve, um, February third and, um, and March second. Uh, I don't have them opened up in front of me. Someone want to call them up just to, to confirm who, uh, who is present?
Danny didn't make it in the packet, so we should push these off till next time.
Okay, we'll push these off till next time. Uh, the next item is committee updates. Um, real quick, uh, just the Town Center Committee. We did on, on last Thursday, we had the first, uh, meeting like this, um, from Hubbardson. So we went over the March fifth public hearing that a couple of us went to, that Mass DOT held. I don't know if anyone's seen it online, uh, but it went, uh, it went absolutely great. Uh, just more than anything confirmed that they're paying for a four million dollar project and that it's happening and that, um, you know, the twenty-five percent, uh, design, uh, is complete. The seventy-five percent design will be submitted in April. And then if, during town meeting, whenever we do have it, if, uh, what, you know, our board plan was, which was to break up the last two payments, the last one to be, um, on, on the warrant for the, the special town, I'm sorry, for the annual town meeting, if, if that gets approved, then they can move on to the hundred percent design, then we're in a perfect slot to slide in, uh, from where some others aren't ready. So it's sort of all part of the plan here, if that can work out. So that's, that's just the update there. Um, and that's it. Uh, I have, uh, twelve, this matters not reasonably anticipated by chair. Nothing from me. Anybody else have anything they want to, uh, bring up?
Right, Ryan, I had asked you, um, I believe at the last meeting about the, um, highway truck. Did you get any information on that, where it is and what the delay is?
I did. I'm, I'm sorry, um, I'm sorry I didn't send that out. That was a oversight. So the truck is in the DPW garage right now. They are doing the, um, forgive my lack of knowledge, but the, the undercoating to protect it from, from the weather, uh, and any final decals and other, and other Hubbardson things, but we do have possession of that. And, um, the, the delay was on the, the vendor's end, uh, in terms of its delivery, so.
I have a question, uh, based from our last meeting when the, uh, selectmen from Rutland, I believe, came before us in regards to the, the state proposal to close the grounds, and, uh, we had petitions at that time. It was gonna be an open meeting at March nine, March nineteenth, was I'm sure was po, canceled because of the state, uh, emergency, et cetera, and no group meetings or anything. Does anyone know any more information on that? Pat, you were gonna go to that meeting, I believe, weren't you?
Yeah, I think it was just postponed for now, Jeff, until they figure out where to hold it and what's going on.
So there was no deadline on that, uh, from a state point of view, in other words, for the people who want, wanted to speak against it. Uh, is, was there a deadline, as far as you know?
Uh, as far as I'm, I know there wasn't. I believe they're just gonna hold off, and even the state's holding off on their opinion. And obviously, they have to hear from the residents of these towns.
Okay. Okay, I, else, anyone want to bring up? All right, public press, uh, anyone else that we don't, um, I don't know, anyone else on the line here?
So just so. So, um, we're aware, I've been monitoring the chat and making sure that no one's been raising their hands or anything, so it doesn't look like we have anything. Um, and, and people are listening in. And then, I'm sorry, I didn't jump in quicker, but just want to make sure you're monitoring your, your email in the next, uh, twenty-four hours and talking to the board to sign whatever comes at you, especially the declaration and, um, any of the contracts tonight. So I'll try and get them out within the next twenty-four hours.
Okay, uh, I guess that's all we have here. Uh, no one has anything else?
Move to a Jan.
Okay, take thirty-eight. Any discussion? All in favor?
Roll call.
Yeah.
All right.
Roll call.
Yeah, that's below.
Roll call, Dan, yes. Uh, Jeff?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Chris?
Uh, me.
I couldn't hear you.
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
All right, well done, everybody.
Dan, I'm sorry to be a pain. One more thing.
You're not.
The, um, I know, I'm not sorry. The, the one-day pour license, I'm not sure if we did that roll call, so just to make sure. Do you want to do it again?
Yeah, somebody want to make that motion again?
I'll, I'll make that motion to approve the one-day pour at the, um, there, or whatever it is.
Second emotion.
Discussion? All in favor, Dan? Yes, Jeff?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Chris?
Yeah.
Pat?
Yes.
Okay, um, so we were still in discussion for, uh, adjourning. Is there any, uh, anything anyone needs to add or amend, uh, the motion on the table? No? Okay, all in favor?
Yes.
Dan, yes, Jeff?
Yes.
Um, Jamie?
Yes.
Chris?